Please.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor Police.
Here. I declare quorum present, please stand in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mike just came in. First item, I need a motion to approve the minutes for city council meeting of September 6th. So move. Any questions, corrections?
Move to second.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
For minutes?
Yeah.
Alderman Winger, no, it's not here. Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
That passes. Next, communications. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not on the agenda? Yes, sir. If you can go to the microphone, state your name and address. You can go to the podium right over there. That's okay. Is the microphone on? Chief?
Yes, it is. I saw Nick for turning that.
Hello, I'm Dr. Kreis. I'm at 199 South Addison Road in Wooddale. I'm here representing the Wooddale Lions. As you know, we are a civic group that helps people in the community and right now we are performing a Wooddale Bensonville candlelight bowl. It's gonna be a Wooddale Bowl on September 29th at 7:00 PM. Twenty-two fifty for a bowler with a buffet and fifteen dollars per person with a buffet only. I hope we get a lot of people out there to help us out and it'd be nice to see everybody there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you spell your name?
Excuse me. Do you have something we can put on bulletin board? And could you spell your last name again? Or you have it? Perfect. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Any other citizens? Yes.
Yes, good evening. I'm Melissa Stoll from 145 South Cedar Street in Wooddale. And it's concerning and I'd like to talk on the concerning the firing of John Kramer as head of the Department of Public Works. I'm appalled when I heard about this and I'm further appalled that no one that I have approached from this council could give just cause for this firing and especially when there's additional comments made about his job is has been well done and there's no blemish in that regards to his work record. So it further, you know, causes me confusion as to why he would have been fired. And as a resident of the city who has been very happy with his work, one of few people who do work well in this city and for the city, I'm requesting that he be rehired for the position. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, written communiques. I have a one written communique. Wooddale Historical Society has sent us a letter. They are renovating the barn. It's $25,000. They are asking for a donation. Does anybody wish to make any comment? The Wooddale Historical Society, they are redoing the barn where they hold ghost stories. They are requesting a donation. I think they might have given all the aldermen a letter individually. He might have received them last week.
Yes.
And they are requesting if possible if we can make a donation.
Is there a dollar amount?
Well, it's 25,000 to do the work. They're asking, here it says, hold on. A thousand dollars will, if you pledge a thousand, basically they'll put a plaque in in the honor of that.
Well, how much?
How much do we give already?
How much should we give to the high school? To the last, Fenton High School last week?
$300.
Besides the money that we gave them before?
Well, that was last year. The finance director advised me that the $500 that was given was given last year's budget and the $300 goes for this year's budget. So only $300 was given this year to Fenton.
Okay, how much was given to this? How much is in the budget for historical society?
Mr. Manager.
I believe it's 6,500.
They have a total, how much did they raise already or no?
Their total they're trying to raise is 25,000. Okay. Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to give them a 300, 300 now to start. See how the project goes along and go from there.
Do I have a second? Fails for lack of second.
Why second it?
I didn't hear you. Did you hear?
I take that back.
I second it.
Okay, thank you. On the question, go ahead Alderman Wesley.
I'm gonna be very surprised with this vote because we're gonna sit here. Since I, since Alderman Wesley seconded and no one else jumped in and added right away, I'm gonna be very curious on how this vote goes since we gave it to Fenton High School for the $300, so. That's all I gotta say.
Roll call.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman, pardon me, Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
That passes. There you go.
Thank you.
I have no other written communiques under mayor's report, just one item. Just so you know, just a quick update, the fire station has tagged on to our road project and they basically have signed off to their addition. This does not need to go to council, just as information only to the council. And I have nothing else. Mr. Manager.
I have two items, Mr. Mayor. First item, you all should have received a Prairie Fest report in your latest packet. Basically with Prairie Fest, we have to start moving forward and planning before the budget season starts to make sure we're meeting all of our deadlines. So I just need some direction on whether or not we'd like to continue the fest next year. Keep in mind that next year will be the last year we'd be able to hold it in our current location. The following year we would probably have to switch because of the safety improvements to the intersection. So there will be one more year in the current location. So I would just need some direction on whether or not we want to continue the fest.
Do we have a motion to concur?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Wesley. Roy Wesley.
Has the Prairie Fest committee looked at the other, another location? And have they desired to move the committee?
Mr. Manager. The committee did discuss moving to a larger location in the past. There hasn't been any official direction to move. I just stated that this would be the last chance that we could hold it there for next year.
Okay. One more thing?
Go ahead.
Mr. Manager, would you forward to the Prairie Fest committee about looking at using local vendors for the rentals of the tents and stuff? I'm looking at $17,000 in bills here. And I don't think any of these, these two bills I'm looking at is in DuPage County. So would you forward that to them?
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, that's fine. Typically, the Prairie Fest committee doesn't select the vendors. A lot of times our public works department does that, so we can certainly have the Prairie Fest committee more involved in that.
Well, then I would look at staff to look at it more carefully.
Alderman Sizmarski.
When is the plan for the intersection to be changed? I thought it was next year during the Prairie Fest.
Actually.
Has it been changed?
What's happening is because of, there's gonna be some land acquisition. We're told by HR Green, I think I mentioned this about a month ago. Because of land acquisition, there probably will not be any construction next summer because IDOT will be taking their time on it. That's, that was the latest update we had from HR Green. Alderman Shockey.
What does the land acquisition have to do with the intersection?
For the turning lanes. There's a couple extra turning lanes going in and there's a couple of spots that will need to be purchased for the extra turning lanes.
So we're gonna have to wait another year?
Mr. Manager.
Well, the schedule is gonna be tight as it was and per IDOT's guidelines, there needs to be a certain amount of time and they take a certain amount of, or do a certain amount of processes to get the land acquisition completed. So we were pushing it to begin with, so now it's pretty much a lock that it would be 2014 we would start in the spring.
All right.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Keep in mind that the other reason why that is going longer is the bill that we just paid ACOM did not finish the surveying out there that we had serving on this second phase, which was not done on the first phase that should have been done. So that's also time consuming too. They have to survey that whole area again because it was not done on the first phase that we paid a company that didn't complete their assignment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions on the Prairie Fest? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The one other item I do have is the city is in consortium with other cities and communities within the immediate area for the Ryder Cup. There's been quite a bit of promotional material by these cities for the Ryder Cup. Some QR coded pamphlets that are being distributed at our hotels promoting our local businesses and such. And as part of that, there is also a promotional video that the mayor's put together and it's airing on our local access TV and all the other communities' local access TV as well as the internet. So we'll just, it's like a three minute video. We'll just show it right now so you, so everybody can see. Okay, that's enough, Nick. So we'd like to thank our friends at the Village of Addison. I believe they were the ones that actually produced the video. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we have consent agenda. We have seven items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Any questions, comments? Alderman Shockey.
Item E, can we take that off the consent?
Item E.
I guess that's number five.
Yes. Frank, do you amend the motion? Take item E off.
Okay, amend the motion.
Mike?
Take item E off.
You have a second? Okay. All right, then I'd like to motion to approve the six items on the agenda, six remaining items on the agenda. Item A, approval of pay request, partial number one, HR Green, Irving Park Road, Wooddale Road, intersection safety improvement, phase two, not to exceed amount of $69,696.91. Item B, approval of pay request, partial number two, RW Dunhaman Company for the Metro Parking Lot Improvements Project and a not to exceed amount of $311,349.63. Item C, approval of pay request, partial number one, standby power upgrades, South Wastewater Treatment Plant to Argon Electric Company Incorporated and not to exceed amount of $255,658.50. Item D, approval of pay request, partial number four, Maxim Construction Corp. for the North Wastewater Treatment Upgrade Phase One Project and a not to exceed of $423,295.30. Item F, approval for city attorney preparing ordinance for the adoption of the text amendment of the UDO of the updated and revised Stormwater Management Ordinance. Item G, a resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Thorn Electric, Inc. for the Irving Park Road, Salt Creek Bridge Ornamental Light Installation. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
That passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning. Alderman Lazara.
I'd like to call this committee chairman report for planning, zoning and building. Take a roll call on this or?
You have to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion on the ordinance on annexing certain territories commonly known as the 17W271 Deer Path Road property to the City of Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois. That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Mayor Police.
Yes. That passes.
Also like to make a motion on a resolution for the City of Wooddale regarding maintenance of the Salt Creek Special Flood Hazard Zone Acquisition Project in Wooddale, Illinois. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Can we get a little background on this? What is, what this is actually entails? Or is it just a cut and dry?
Mr. Forrest.
I just didn't understand it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all probably remember, we're in right now requesting grant funding through FEMA and AIMA to purchase nine, potentially purchase nine flood prone properties on the Salt Creek flood plain. And as part of this application, it's actually kind of trying to get all these parts of the applications in are, it's like trying to hit a moving target these days. We submit what we're supposed to be submitting and then we hear back, well, we need this, we need this. So we're constantly kind of updating our applications. What this resolution is, part of the application is that we have to assure FEMA that any properties that we acquire through this program, the City of Wooddale guarantees that we will maintain. So, and not put structures on there and not do any sort of, you know, public works projects on these property, but just return them to open space and maintain them as open space as long as the city owns them.
So.
Go ahead, continue.
When you, obviously we can't build a building because of the area, but sidewalks, paths and walking, are we restricted from doing anything period? Or can we do some minor trail tweaking, not, you know, non-building structure?
Yeah, walking trails, particularly if they're not of a hard pavement, are allowable uses in the floodway and in the flood plain, so that would be acceptable.
Anything further? Go ahead.
So the way you said that, would this follow the general rules for building in a flood plain?
Mr. Forrest.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, you had a question?
Hey, one question. Is this the money that we try and get from them to buy it out or is this a partial that we go and pay?
Mr. Forrest.
Well, this is, it is gonna be ultimately, depending on what our approval ends up being, it will be a cost sharing. But yes, this is for the money, for the funds that they are going to be giving the city to purchase these properties, we have to assure them that we're going to maintain that property as open space as long as we own it.
Follow it?
And then, and then the demolition of those homes or whatever may come out of this is our responsibility.
Correct. That has to be done within 90 days of purchasing it.
Anything further? Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
That passes. And that concludes your report?
And that concludes my report, yes.
Public Health and Safety, Alderman Coles.
No report.
Public Works.
No report, Mayor.
We do have a comment for Public Works.
We do have, we have three, three comments, three comments from Stormwater as of last night. One of them was about the flooding that's on Irving Park by Maha Lumber, but I found out that's an IDOT problem and that we can't do nothing about the sewer that has dropped there because IDOT has to be notified and I think they were notified. John, John wouldn't know, but I think it has been notified that the sewer's down and that's where the flood, flood is. All right, and second one is about the engineering that's going around to check our sub pumps, RJN on Ethel Lane. I think they've had, they had a problem on Ethel Lane with a couple houses over there that took too long to check out. And one of the houses had elderly lady taking care of four kids and a dog and she had terrific amount of trouble. And I guess she, they finally did it, but she was all by herself most of the time in the basement while the kids were running around, I guess in the house upstairs. And so I think they should be a little more careful when they come to a door and knock on a door. And also they have hang, hangers that go on the doorknobs. So when they ain't here, when they person ain't there, they can make an appointment and so they can pick them up. That's the other thing. And the last thing is about open, the open day that we're supposed to have sometime with all the different box districts and everything. You know, but.
The town hall meeting and the date is not set yet. They wanted to have, I believe, a flood, flood report. Open house.
An open house.
Once we get the date, we'll promote it.
Once we get the date, they'll publish it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Shockey, you got something further on that?
If I can add to that.
Go ahead.
The notice that they left where they're supposed to leave by the door, but I understand they haven't been doing so, says that at no time will crews need to enter your business or residence. And I understand from the meeting that one person had the people in there for 45 minutes. Another one had for 40 minutes. I think we need to keep in touch with this company, RJN Group, and figure out, are we having them go in the house or are we not? It's complicated.
The manager has made notes and we'll look into it right away.
Well, I can't, I can't see how they can't check the sub pump from the outside. They have to go in the house. I mean, that's, they only take pictures, I believe, in the house. But they have to, they have to go in the house to check the sub pump, how it's hooked up, I believe. Right, John? So.
Okay.
Then that's what I'm talking about. Why does the notice say?
Right, well, the manager's gonna look into that and straighten that out.
The, the hanger is printed wrong.
Alderman Wesley, something else?
No, that's it.
No, Alderman Wesley. Go ahead.
We're talking about Stormwater here a little. Did we get a new engineer on Stormwater again?
Go ahead. Mr. Manager.
We did.
So that's Beckman Woodman again.
Correct. Beckson Woodman does represent the city as the city's Stormwater Engineer.
So.
But that was at the, that was at the committee's request. Stormwater Committee's request.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so there's nothing else on Public Works.
No more.
Finance and Administration, Alderman Shockey.
No report.
Okay, other business, we have item E from the consent agenda. Approval of contract amendment number one, HR Green and not to exceed amount of $128,374,000 for phase two engineering for Irving Park, Wooddale Road, intersection safety improvements. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Question. Alderman Shockey.
Yes. We just approved a pay request for phase two for $69,696.91. Phase two, I understand, is the engineering. Now here we have another bill for phase two for $128,340,000 and we're told that we're not gonna be able to do anything until 2014. We're paying this money two years in advance of when we can do anything?
Mr. Manager.
The item that you're questioning is not a payment. The last one was a payment. This. This item is a, is a contract amendment, so at the end of the contract, it's gonna cost $128,000 more than they originally said down the road, you know, a year or two from now when they finish it out. Not, this isn't a pay request.
This is the... How much was the original contract for?
Uh, six hundred and change. The high end now is gonna be seven hundred and change.
Just for the engineering?
Yes, for the, and then you'll be done with engineering.
Hopefully, 2014.
Well, the engineering may be done before 2014, but because of the land acquisition component of it, construction can't start until 2014.
Alright. Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
Is this what the changes that we approved?
Last week.
That's adding to this.
Those are the additions.
Okay.
From last week. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Keep in mind, this change order has also came in place for this contract, also had to do with stuff that was not done in Phase One, that they thought was supposed to be done. So, some of these items that were going on this change order was not done in Phase One, which should have been done. So, this is carryover. And I believe this is still the grant money that is in that great separation. Am I correct? It's not the city, it's, it's grant money still being done. But keep in mind, this is a, a lack of the first contractor, some of it, to do the first phase of this, that we sat here and we kept paying the bills, and we never should have. Thank you.
Anything further? Alderman Sizmarski.
On the same note, I'd like to know the city manager, uh, how, where, where do we stand with ComEd and getting a town meeting?
At this point, I know that, I believe, Representative Skip Saviano was meeting with ComEd today before we discussed anything with a ComEd meeting, a town hall meeting. Um, so, we wanted to get his input first, and, uh, I haven't had a ti- chance to touch base with him, but the strategy was talk to the legislators first and then perhaps have a town hall-type meeting. Um, ComEd has been making some progress as of late, you've seen in their packets. Um, they've got some infrastructure improvements planned, um, within a, I think Alderman Wesley was within 90 days when we last met.
Yeah, within, oh, I'm sorry. Within 90 days, the meeting I had with ComEd, the issue that we have in our ward, they told us that they will have a, a breaker installed within 90 days that will not trip the power as mu- as quick as much as is over there. Down to the tree situation, they're working on trying to line that up and getting the trees trimmed over there. But they did ensure me by November that that circuit breaker or that trip fuse will be in place by November. I guess it takes 60 days to order part, or 30 days to order part, then it's gotta go off for engineering. Everything's gotta go engineering. Uh, can't figure that one out, but, and then it will be installed. So, they do say November, and I'm holding them down to carpet November, because if it ain't installed in, by November, we will be seeking possible litigation, far from concerned.
Before we go further on this, could we have a roll call on, uh, H.R. Green?
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles. Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Oh.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro.
Yes.
That passes. Alderman Sizmarski, you had enough?
Yeah, I'd like to get a copy of the plan of action. That ComEd has said what they're gonna do. Hold them to it.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem. Um, I think there was some information in the packet last week, but I think we've got some new information, so we'll add it all together and put it in there for a complete package for you.
Okay, next, approval listed bill, September 20th, 2012. Alderman Shockey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, before I begin with the, begin with the amounts, I'd like to thank Alderman Eugene Wesley for finding a glitch in the insurance, saving us, uh, having to pay Election Brothers $321. So, that comes out of the general fund. So, the general fund now is $116,074.58. Motor Fuel Tax Fund is $560.94. Tourism Fund, $26,770.11. Capital Projects Fund, $462,857.41. Equipment Replacement Fund, $144,402. Commuter Parking Lot Fund, $376.56. Sanitation Fund, $78,525.90. Water and Sewer Capital Projects, $728,361.34. And the Water and Sewer Fund, $221,417.23. And the Grants Fund is $1,543.45, for a total of all funds of $1,780,889.52. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro.
Yes.
Includes the bills.
That passes. Thank you. There is no need for executive session, no items to be referred, no answer information only. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
We got a motion.
Oh, something else?
Mr. Mayor, in order to put something on executive session, how do I go about that? I, I wanted to go exec- executive session, discuss personnel today, but, uh, obviously, we can't because of any on agenda.
Okay.
So, I would ask that be put on agenda next committee, I mean, next.
Next council. Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley, you had something else? Go ahead.
I've been getting these emails from residents about the sidewalks being dirty after they can, after they do the, uh, construction, not doing a good job on cleaning up after that. Is there, what do the engineers do, Beckman-Woodman or whoever's, who's ever handling the project, do they inform the, the resident that there's been damage on their property from that, instead of the residents calling us or dealing with it? I mean, is there a way that, that these engineers could notify these residents? Because...
Mr. Houseman, can you go to the?
What, what happens here is my blood pressure gets rise very quickly on this.
Good evening, sir.
Go ahead.
Yes, certainly, if, if we see the damage that's out there, we will certainly notify the residents. We withhold payment on any damage, you know, sidewalks, or if we, uh, see that the restoration hasn't done, been done properly, we create a punch list for the contractor, take care of them. Certainly, if, if any resident has an issue, please refer them either to myself or one of our field inspectors out there. We'll address the situation right away. Um, typically, we will create a punch list, gather up all the concrete work and restoration work that needs to get done, and then bring it before the contractor to get it done in one swoop after they've gone through the first pass.
Go ahead, you got a follow?
Um, yeah, I wanna bring this to the attention here. Uh, on Irving Park, the sidewalks report on probably Wednesday or Thursday last week.
Mm-hmm.
And I got this email on sixteenth, which would be Sunday.
Okay.
And then it says, can the gentleman that did the sidewalk replace, please repair the asphalt they damaged and clean up the concrete off the asphalt? This is in front of my office, which is a business. This is a fine example of what I'm talking about, of saying, this is Sunday now. Evidently, no one notified this person in front of his business.
Okay.
That there was damage to his blacktop. This is exactly what I'm, I'm trying to, to prevent, especially in a business area.
Certainly. Can I have an address, please?
138 West Irving Park Road.
I'll look into it tomorrow morning.
Yes, but we have to do something that...
We can take this up under committee next week, if you'd like.
Well, that's fine, but they have to do a better job.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Here we have a motion. Do we have a second on the adjournment?
I did.
Yeah, you did.
Oh, go ahead. The clerk has an announcement? Go ahead.
No.
The attorney?
Okay. Yeah, the packets for the, uh, anyone seeking to, uh, be elected official in the City of Wooddale for those offices that are up at the next election will be available. The petition, uh, signature start on the 25th. Those will be available from the clerk's office.
Thank you. Who has a second on the adjournment?
I'll take it.
I'll take it.
To adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. We're adjourned.